We're calling this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council regular meeting. We're in Mon- oh, I moved the mic. And it says, I'm not to move the mic. We're in the Morgantown City Council regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street, Tuesday, April 4th, and it's a little bit past 7:00 PM. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she'd please call the roll.
Yes, Javu Gonam.
President.
Bill Kowaki.
Here.
Iksia Vega.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Celine.
Here.
Now, we're gonna go through the pledge. Everyone stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're approving minutes. We're looking at the March 21st, 2023 special meeting minutes, the March 21st, 2023 regular meeting minutes, and the March 28th, 2023 Committee of Home minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? We can note that when we're responding, that the deputy mayor and I were not here for the Committee of Home meeting, so I'm not comfortable approving the minutes, but I will say yes, and it will mean that I'm approving the other two minutes, unless you want to pull that out separately. I think we can just approve them by proclamation?
Yes.
All right. Now, we're under correspondence. Does there happen to be anyone here for the Week of Engagement proclamation? So, I've just been instructed where you're supposed to stand and where I'm supposed to stand. So, do you just stand anywhere in here?
That they see you?
Right there is George. Okay. Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas, West Virginia University and the city of Morgantown is committed to fostering a culture of academic engagement and community service among its students, staff, and community members. And whereas, volunteerism and community engagement are proven cost-effective are proven cost-effective strategies to meet city needs. And whereas, service participants demonstrate commitment and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, points of light have declared April 16th through April 22nd as National Volunteer Week. And whereas, the West Virginia University Center for Community Engagement serves as a hub for coordinating and executing community-wide engagement and volunteer initiatives between university and community partnerships. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the third week of April 2023 as Week of Engagement. The City of Morgantown encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of engagement in our city and to find ways to give back to their communities. So.
Great.
Here it is.
Thank you.
And I'd like to hand it to you.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna go back and sit down, but if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Yeah.
And your position and any words you'd like to say about this.
Great. Okay. Yeah. Cool. Thank you. Hello, Council. My name is Mason Arbogast. I, this time last year, was not a resident of Morgantown, but this year I am. So, hello for the first time as a resident. I work with the Center for Community Engagement as the civic and volunteer engagement coordinator, which essentially just means that I'm working with students to enrich their experience while NWVU and while here in Morgantown. So, whether that be through service learning courses or through our community partner program or just through general volunteer service. I'm kind of the data and logistics and how do we make this better person. Just a little off the top of my head fact for you. In the last year, we have placed over 3,000 students in the Morgantown community to do service totaling over 63,000 hours. So, that's something we're pretty proud of. If we also look at the Health Sciences Campus and Athletics, we're looking at just over 95,000 hours in the Morgantown and surrounding area. So, that's, that's great. We also have over 30 service learning courses, which have an official partnership with community partners. So, these can be businesses, these can be nonprofits, these can be general organizations. And these students, through their coursework, learn about the service that they're doing. They learn about the organizations that they're working with. And then, they get credit at the end of the semester. So, it's kind of that mutual benefit, that, that duopoly there. So, this is great. Coming up on the Week of Engagement in April, that's also going to be our awards banquet, where we recognize a lot of the work that we've done in the community. So, we'll be sure to kind of share that out to you all as we post that and share that. So, thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for taking the time. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up. Let's see. Is Autumn Williams in the room? All right. So, this is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. And if you would just come right up where he was. I'm learning today where to stand, so I'm not turning my back on everyone or something like that. So, here we go. Thank you. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Monongalia County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas, staff and volunteers of West Virginia sexual assault programs and other professionals have come together as the West Virginia Foundation for Rape Information Services to support each other in their work and provide the state of West Virginia and its citizens with a central source of information on sexual assault. Whereas, with leadership, dedication, encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Monongalia County through prevention education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas, the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center, RDVIC, strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively, actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jenny Celine, the mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, join anti-sexual violence advocates and support service programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Along with the United States government and the state of West Virginia, the Council does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Monongalia County and applauds the efforts of many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in providing awareness about sexual assault. So, thank you very much for doing this.
Oh, yes.
And please go forth and make good use of it.
Thank you, thank you.
And if you would like to have some words, you're welcome to it.
Okay.
So, just appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm Autumn. I'm a shelter staff with the RDVIC. It just, it means a lot that this has been handed to us. We try to do our best with victims and survivors. So, just thank you a lot.
So, it's our third and final proclamation.
For Fair Housing Month, Teresa Nichols, Ryan McAllister. I'm not sure who else, but I appreciate both of you. Ryan McAllister is a Fair Housing Commissioner, and Teresa Nichols is a Home Ownership Center Manager. See, they do give me nice information about. I liked it. Sounded accurate. I hope. Proclamation. Under the federal fair housing law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, no American should have the right to purchase or rent shelter of choice abridged because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, natural, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And whereas, under the West Virginia State Fair Housing Law, Title 49-2-305 MCA, it is illegal to deny housing to any person because of sex, race, religion, color, age, physical or mental disability, or national origin. And whereas, it is the fundamental policy of this nation, our state, and our city to advance, safeguard, and defend the principles and guarantees of equal opportunity for all. And whereas, the places where people live have a direct impact on the quality of their health, education, and access to economic opportunities. And whereas discriminatory housing practices create racial and economic segregation in communities that can lead to desperate outcomes in the overall quality of life. And whereas, the City of Morgantown believes that understanding of and access to fair housing laws have made our community and our neighborhoods stronger and more vibrant. And whereas, we are committed to programs that will help educate the public about the right to fair housing practices in the City of Morgantown. And whereas, we are committed to promoting housing choices and fostering inclusive communities free from housing discrimination. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of City Council, want to thank the many people and organizations in our community who have opened the doors of housing opportunity to all citizens and proclaim the month of April 2023 to be Fair Housing Month. Wonderful. Thank you. I want an official handshake. You bet. Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want to do the speech?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Feel free. You guys can both have a little word if you want. I know you're quite eloquent. It's my chance to shine. I know. Take it.
Thank you for your time. As she mentioned, my name's Teresa Nichols. I'm the manager for the Home Ownership Center at the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority. We certainly believe in housing. Last year was the first year we received a Fair Housing Education and Outreach Grant. Having support from this city was a big part of that. We were able to teach a lot of people in the community about fair housing. They didn't understand the rights to begin with. This is the second year. We did receive funding again this year. We just found out last week. We are the only education and outreach grant received in the state of West Virginia. So, our mission is even more important now than ever. And we hope to expand on what we learned last year so that we can teach even more people and actually start sitting together with the right people to start making some changes to our community. So, we appreciate your support in our mission.
And I'm Brian McAllister. I am one of our two commissioners here in the city for the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority. I would just like to recognize. uh, which is renewed on a daily basis. Thank you.
We have one public hearing. This public hearing is on an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the Second Ward of the City of Morgantown, from B one Neighborhood Business District to B four General Business District, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown as shown in the exhibit heretofore attached and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. So this is a public hearing just regarding this one item.
Good evening, Council. Good meeting, Administration. My name is James Giuliani. I live at two five six Prairie Avenue, the national landmark, historic Alexander White House, and also houses the largest and best collection of Morgantown pottery, which one of these days we'll get out there and everybody will recognize that they already do across the rest of the country, but we don't know what we have here, but we've got something great. That being said, couple things. You can go ahead and start my four minutes now too. Oh, I don't, I, I got four minutes, I got more than four minutes. Okay, that's right, we're talking about a zoning issue.
Just one i- one issue.
One item, one issue. It has to do with zoning throughout all of Morgantown, in my mind, to some degree, okay? Because guess what? We have a comprehensive plan. Was this part of the comprehensive plan? And if so, are we changing our comprehensive plan to adjust this? And how is that bought into play that what's changed there that's different than what was there before? So what is the reason we're taking this zoning action right now? We have a comprehensive plan that's going to be coming out sometime sooner than later, I hope. Expectations may be August, September, but the fact of the matter is, I was doing some good reviews the other night. I watched the initial meetings of the comprehensive plan for two thousand twenty-three. And you know something, what it says? Says West Virginia University has thirty thousand students. They don't have thirty thousand students. We're basing our comprehensive plan, we're basing our comprehensive plan on false information, okay? Throughout the whole plan, the Richwood Project is not even mentioned as a potential development in what we do and what would change the course of the City of Morgantown. So my question is, is that zoning tonight, is it the proper zoning? How did we justify it should be B four as opposed to R three? Okay? And when we did it, I've been told that, oh, it's coming. Why didn't we look comprehensively at the blocks that are, where this property sits to see how it fits in with the other properties? And see now, they said, oh, it's not spot zoning because we have this, that, and the other thing. But the fact of, the fact of the matter is, is it comprehensive zoning? Is it the change that we want there, and are we going to do it comprehensively there? So what I think we need to do, and I don't know where we're at with the comprehensive plan, but based on what was coming out of the March Plan of two thousand twenty-two, where the folks talked about certain different things in the City of Morgantown, those things just aren't the way it is. So if we don't face the reality of who we are, now understand, in our comprehensive plan, we're gonna have to recognize that the City of Morgantown's gonna have to look at a situation where the university's gonna lose four thousand students in population and probably decrease fifteen to two thousand employees. Now, they've recognized this finally. I've been coming to this council for years, for years, and saying, what is going on here? So my question is that, when we do planning, and I hope as we move forward to plan the big plan for the next years, we actually recognize who we are and what we're gonna be and how we face the challenges to be the best that we can be under the circumstances that are gonna be ours, and we know are gonna be ours, coming over the next ten years. There's reality there, folks. If we don't base ourselves in reality, guess what? Who are we? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on just this one item?
I just wanted to, like, give a quick reminder that today's the last day for registration.
Um, why don't you, why don't you do that when we hit the, um, the public portion, which is the general portion? No, appreciate, appreciate your concern. Nope, we just, we don't want anybody to get missed out, so appreciate, rather you said something than, than you missed it. All right. We're gonna close this public hearing. And now we're on unfinished business, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance providing for zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the Second Ward of the City of Morgantown, from B one Neighborhood Business District to B four General Business District, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit heretofore attached and declared to be part of the ordinance as the same, as if the same were fully set forth herein. And... I believe this is a question, um, or an explanation from the City Attorney.
This, uh, this ordinance will, uh, will amend the map classification of two parcels as noted in the, uh, title of the ordinance, to the B four classification, part of the downtown district.
Ryan, could you speak up? We're having, I'm having trouble hearing you too.
The air conditioning is nice, though.
It is.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
I'd be glad to do that. Uh, so, this, uh, the ordinance will amend the parcels designated to the B four classification, the downtown business district. The staff report, along with the Planning Commission recommendation, was presented to City Council at its February Committee of the Whole Meeting. Planning Commission advised that the change was concurrent with the comprehensive plan and recommended amendment. City Council, in order to make amendments to the zoning map, must find that the amendment is consistent with its comprehensive plan, or that there have been substantial changes in character such that the, uh, comprehensive plan no longer applies to that area, and then has the authority to do so by ordinance, and that is what's presented for your consideration this evening.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? We have had it come up several times now.
Move to approve.
Second. Unless there's any further questions or concerns.
Do we want to hear from, I see you're sitting in the, in the audience, do we, do we want to hear from Ricky at all? Oh, I'm sorry. No, my mistake, never mind.
No, that's why the City Attorney. All right. I don't think we have any further discussion. If you please call the rule. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Igzie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. Now we are on to Boards and Commissions. We have several Board and Commission appointments this evening.
Start with me.
All right.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Patrick Brooks to the Housing Advisory Commission.
Nice, my affirmation.
You.
All right. Igzie Vega?
Um, I would like to name, nominate Catherine Fonseca to the Police-Civilian Review Board.
Second, thank you. And my affirmation. And, who else? Did you pull, or who else?
You can keep coming this way.
Okay, keep coming up. I didn't have any.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Jay Scorzetti to the ICC Building Code of Appeals.
Second.
Nice, my affirmation. Right? One more.
Like to nominate Brian Church to the Civilian Police Review Board.
Second.
My affirmation.
Please.
All right. Thank you all very much. And now we're to the public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by Council and adopted by resolution. And, um, when you come up, if you would state your name and address, and you can tell when your time is getting short, because the little buttons up there start heading toward red. Um, and this would be the time to make any kinds of public comments that you wish to make. So we're gonna open this public portion. All right. All right. Let's get them up here to talk about voting.
Uh, it's not really much, it's really just a quick, just a quick blur, a quick reminder that apparently today's the last day to register to vote for, uh, city official elections. Uh, that's about all I had to say, really. Uh, did you still need my name and everything? Uh, Jonathan Cook, uh, four zero six Winsley Street, Morgantown, West Virginia, two six five oh one. So, yeah, uh, vote, just, just vote, please, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
All right, now we got four minutes, how about that? Again, James Giuliani, two five six Prairie Avenue. I am a candidate for the first ward seat in the city election, and guess what? I want to hold this City Council accountable. You all need to be accountable for what you don't do, okay? Defense in depth, I was just out there, real party out there. You guys been out there? The defense in depth signs are still on, but it does tell you that it's closed. As a young man who finally would come to the door, told me, I said, who are you, young man? He said, I'm with a group of youth people from Fairmont. I said, oh, really? Yeah, we have a youth gun club. I said, really? So I go in, I said, is there somebody from here from the City of Morgantown? Oh, they found somebody, and we had a great conversation. I found out that there is no actual organization of a business for this, it doesn't have a name. And guess what? There are no contracts. I said, how did this group come out here to shoot? Oh, they've been coming out to defense in depth for years, and we just allow them to come out. I said, are they paying you any money? Of course they're not paying them any money. So we're paying twenty thousand dollars a month, plus utilities, plus insurance, plus demand, there were two police officers out there in the evening time, I don't know where they could be, I'd like them to be downtown. But guess what they're doing? They're servicing the youth of Fairmont. How incredible is that? What are we doing this for? What a joke. What a joke we are when it comes to defense in depth. Really, we look at the experts, the experts, like the police chief, would that be who we're talking about? Really? Or are we talking about the tree board? The experts on the tree board? Really? Guess what? We all, if we're gonna be councilmen, we need to be the experts, because guess what? We're the decision makers, all right? We are the decision makers. Town and gown. We're gonna do it. When I get on this council, we're gonna shift. We're gonna be the best neighbors that West Virginia University can have. And guess what? We're gonna make West Virginia University our neighbors. And guess what we're gonna do? We're gonna work in partnership, because guess what? We're at a tipping point, folks. We're at a tipping point in the City of Morgantown. Understand, we're recognizing the downtown has tremendous problems, and guess what those problems aren't? Those problems are not a homeless problem, those are problems, are crime problem, they're an addiction problem, are there mental illnesses, are all these certain things that's going on? Are there homeless people down there? I suspect that there are. But guess what? We're gonna clean up this downtown. Because unless we clean up our downtown, guess what? All the people, all the people who actually do love our community, that want to be here, that want to contribute, they can't. You wanna know why? Because they're not being allowed to. They're not being allowed to. Because guess what? Nobody really cares about normal people in the City of Morgantown. Why don't we care about normal people? Honestly, why don't we? Because the business owners, they're so upset at this point in time, they feel like they get no attention from anything, they don't get anything, they don't even hardly get lip service. Well, guess what? We're gonna change that too. We're gonna change a lot of things around here, because guess what? I'd like you to answer me the question, any of you councilmen tonight in your report. Besides the Hazel Ruben Quain Amphitheater, which they forced on us because they had made such an investment, they said, listen, we're not gonna allow you to fail at this, we're gonna give you millions more money, and we're gonna give you a program director, et cetera, et cetera. I want to know from this council, what is any positive achievement that this City Council, your council, or previous to you in the last six years, has brought forward to the City of Morgantown? Okay? The only thing that we actually have positive is the Richwood Avenue Project. It's a fantastic project, guess what we haven't done? We don't promote ourselves. Why? Don't we believe in ourselves, who we are? Well, here's what I'm gonna say, we're gonna change all that, okay? Because guess what? Hold me accountable. Hold me accountable as I hold you accountable. Let's be transparent as I'm transparent. Let's be honest. Let's move this city forward. Let's move this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ben Mayo, I live at five oh nine Martin Street. I'm actually a candidate for Seventh Work for Council. Um, some of you know me, some of you don't, some people know me a little bit better. Um, I, uh, want you to know that if I get on council, no matter who it is, I will always work with who's there. We will always work for the better of Morgantown. I, if we disagree on something, we'll, we'll separate that and talk about the things that we do agree on, and won't hold one aspect against something else. We have to work together, we have to work together with the state, and we have to work together with the county. That's the way we'll get stuff done and move forward. So, just wanted to introduce myself to those that don't know me, and you'll see a lot of me, one way or the other. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Uh, Jamie Summerlin, two oh nine Kingwood. Uh, I want to just talk about one topic, Walnut Street Bridge Lights. I know this has been something that has been discussed numerous times, it was brought up at the last Greenmont Neighborhood Association meeting. I do want to thank the council members that were in attendance for the Greenmont Neighborhood Association meeting that night. Work was done on the bridge today, uh, I noticed, as they were fixing a couple of the potholes at, on the space there. And as it was closed down to one lane, I was thinking to myself, why couldn't they have taken the opportunity to fix the lights that have been submitted on the three one one app, have been discussed and emailed about, have been, uh, pushed out? And, and hearing numerous stories going back and forth, whether it's someone with the city, whether it's the DOH, somebody can't find the lights, we don't know who has them, who can put them up. I thought it was a great opportunity missed that we could have taken care of those. I know the city's very proud of the Ruby Amphitheater events going on this summer, especially for those that live downtown, including myself and my family now. And hearing about it so much on the three one one app, as I'd mentioned earlier, uh, I'd like to see the council take the same pride in keeping the pathways lit and safe as we make our homes, or make our way back to our homes after the events end this summer. Uh, to Mr. Giuliani's comments during the public hearing portion, we all need to work together, and, uh, this diverts from what I was just talking about, but it was something I just thought about. I'd like to ask the council to lean on the parties that MUB requested, uh, I brought this up at the Neighborhood Association meeting as well, that the MUB requested support for, uh, or from, uh, concerning the flooding and things that happened on Patterson Drive. Um, you know, the, they, they, in the paper, had leaned on WVU and W, and the DOH to provide support, uh, for the studies, to get that taken care of, and everything that I've read so far has stated that they, those parties have refused, uh, to participate in that. Um, my thoughts are, if rains happen during a football game, uh, you see how fast it gets worked on, or how fast MUB or the City of Morgantown gets blamed for the situation. I would ask the city and the city's representatives, uh, that, and the city's representative that is on the MUB board to speak out and make a statement about what MUB is trying to do for the betterment and safety of our community as a whole. It would help us all collectively, and I think that, uh, they all have our best interests in mind, uh, in trying to fix that problem, and I would like to see the City Council take a stand on that and make a statement on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tom Bloom, ten twenty-one Ashton Drive. I'm president of the County Commission, and I'm here representing the County Commissioners. As you're quite aware, the soliciting and panhandling problem has become a serious concern in the county, in the city, and at WVU. It is becoming a safety problem in unincorporated areas of the county, on WVU campus, and the City of Morgantown. Not only is it unsafe for the panhandler in the road, but there have been several accidents because cars are suddenly stopping at the green light to give a donation, only to get rear-ended by another car. We have also had numerous close calls. The County Commissioners tonight are requesting a meeting with representatives from the city, along with WVU officials, to develop an ordinance to regulate soliciting and panhandling that is uniform for all governmental bodies. Currently, your code deals mostly with aggressive solicitation, and then it provides definitions on what is an aggressive manner. Our ordinance has some specific prohibitions. Example, it is unlawful to solicit, panhandle, or in or along a roadway. It even states that a person must have... person must obtain a permit from the sheriff's office, with other restrictions. However, I want to make it very clear, neither ordinance nor policy is effective unless we enforce the laws that we have established. It would be advantageous if we were all working under the same law and providing the same level of enforcement. Now, I want to make it very clear that our city and county provides numerous opportunities to help these individuals improve themselves. We have a great reputation for caring for those in need. We have exceptional nonprofits to provide these services and the programs to help individuals improve their lifestyle. But what good is offering help and funding if they choose not to use our free service? I receive weekly calls from concerned citizens who are immediately confronted by panhandlers as they get out of the car in the city or in a county parking lot. It may not reach the level of aggressive panhandling, but it is becoming a serious, serious problem. The three calls I got this past week were from women who were scared and felt very uncomfortable. They're asking for help so they can walk around downtown, so they can use the rails or trails, and be able to enjoy the amenities that the city and the county offer without worrying about whether they have to be confronted by individuals on a daily basis requesting money. I believe that if we work together, we could come up with a unified ordinance or policy to deal with this issue. We need to be proactive, and we need to make sure that we enforce our laws on a consistent basis. That's city, county, and WVU. I have spoken with WVU officials, and they are willing to be a part of this discussion. I'm hoping that if we come up with a written policy, we would then bring in Star City, Granville, and Westover. Our county is quite well-known for offering amazing services, for amazing programs, and care for those individuals who are in need of help. I'm asking you tonight to be a part of the solution, to be proactive and move forward and eliminate this dangerous issues that arise from panhandling in our area. Thank you. And I do apologize, I will have to leave at the end of the public portion, so I'm not running out. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? This is your moment.
It's probably just going to be another quick one here. Again, Jonathan Cook, 406 Winsley Street, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26501. I kind of got some follow-up when I asked a few weeks ago about, like, where are the recycle bins downtown? Just, just a couple of recycle bins. And I heard about the risk of contamination, and, you know, Republic is kind of saying it's Morgantown's responsibility, and Morgantown's kind of saying it's Republic's responsibility at some point or another. Maybe it was both. Now it's neither. I, I just really don't want to be a dork that carries around, like, an empty plastic cup in my bag, or two, just so I can get to a recycle bin more in the suburbs than, like, Greenmont or South Park. It's, it's, it's kind of cringey of me to do, but I feel like if I don't do it, then it's just going to go into the trash. It's just, I know only, like, a portion of stuff recycled gets actually recycled, but it just doesn't feel like a big ask. It really doesn't. I just, I just really want recycle bins back downtown. That's it. That's it. There are none in this building that I know of. So, that's, that's it. If y'all could somehow make some calls, renegotiate, contract, something, anything, it'd be better than nothing. Yeah, that's, that's, that's it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. I think we're at the end here. So, we're going to close this public portion. Now, we're on to new business. Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the Seventh Ward of the city of Morgantown, Tax District 15, Tax Map 55, Parcel 92, from pro-professional residential and office district to B2 Service Business District, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown on the exhibit heretofore attached and declared to be part of this ordinance, as if the same were fully set herein. And I have down here to ask Brian Summerton if there's anything else he wanted to add.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance and the following ordinance on council's agenda are two items that were considered in conjunction by the Planning Commission, but were the subject of two separate petitions to amend the zoning map of the city. Both petitions ask to amend the classification of their parcels from the PRO District, Professional Residential and Office District, to the B2 Service Business District. These parcels are both at the corner of Van Boris and Burrows Street, as shown on the map in the Planning Commission staff report, which was a part of your March Committee of the whole packet. It's not in your packet this evening. The staff report from the Development Services Department to the Planning Commission reported these parcels are within the infill and redevelopment growth concept plan from the comprehensive plan. And the Planning Commission recommended four to two, that the map classification for each of the parcels be changed. If council has any questions about that or your process, which is the same as described for the initial zoning ordinance of the evening, I'd be happy to address this as well.
Is there a motion?
Since you were here, I'll make a motion to accept recommendation.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. And then, questions or concerns? Do you want an explanation of what happened at the Planning Commission meeting?
That would be great.
This passed, not unanimously. A few people on the Planning Commission were concerned about the Van Boris widening project, and that being incomplete, and how that would affect this, or should this happen, and something is built there before that road is changed, widened, more accessible. I had some concerns. I ultimately voted in favor, but I had some concerns about the zoning. It's not spot zoning, because it is up against a B2 district, but this does create an island of PRO with the property adjacent to this, which is the old, it's apparently now a tax office. It used to be Wedgewood Family Practice. So, the, the Planning Commissioners did have some varied concerns, but ultimately determined that it was in accordance with the comprehensive plan that says that that's a good area for infill development. Does anyone have any further questions, or... It's a very difficult corner. It's been an issue for a long time. People have held on to empty property there because they weren't sure what was going on. They didn't have their project ready yet. And even when this changes with DOH, there'll probably be more changes in other directions that happen next. So, so if we, I'm not sure that waiting will, I'm not sure that waiting would help. It's more whether this is desirable or not. So, I think in my mind that this is desirable, but that is for each person here to think of on their own. These are those old Greek lighthouses, correct?
No.
No.
That was the first one we did earlier, the unfinished business.
This is the one at...
This is in my word.
Advantage Health and Wellness Property and an empty lot.
The one that we have to commit to the hole. Perfect. Okay, cool. Thank you.
So, there have been lots of projects in that area. There have been projects to work on the drainage in that area. There have been initial projects to make some changes from DOH. Now, there's this DOH project, and I think there's going to be another one that will look at the intersection. Will be next from the DOH. So, it, it's an intersection that's going to have a lot of...
Traffic.
Traffic, work on it. So, if this helps the situation, that's great.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's in, fitting with the character of the things around it. I would, I would agree that, like, the 613 Burrows, which is like right, the one that you're talking about, like, right next to it, seems like that'll probably come before us as well to be rezoned at some point.
Yeah, we'll have to see.
But, you know, I think it's, you know, it fits with the comprehensive plan. It's a good change.
One, one thing that I think you had pointed out earlier was that there's that creek behind it that kind of separates it off and makes it into an island, those two parcels. So, they're a little separate from the housing in that area.
And the neighborhood, that housing has fairly large wall, like, separating it, that little sun crest place, I think it is, right there.
So, anyway, does anyone have any questions or concerns? If the clerk would call the roll. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ikse Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. So, this is very similar to the last one, but one parcel over. Is there anything to add?
That's correct, Mayor. The same analysis applies. This ordinance covers Parcel 93, which is immediately south of Parcel 92 on Van Boris Road.
So, if we could have a motion for this one? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And then, are there any questions, concerns about this parcel, which is the parcel next door? Clerk, if you would call the roll. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ikse Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. And the next item is see consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Pop Shop WV Inc. for space within the Woodburn School Building. And for this one, I'm asking Emily Mazurili if she would...
Tell us about this one.
Thank you. So, we are doing a little bit of shuffling in the Woodburn Community Complex, in part to accommodate some lease updates, to make everyone's lease more along the same terms as far as being all-inclusive, and just updating some of the rates and some of the details of the lease agreement. And then, in particular with Pop Shop, they've had some changeovers with their own organization through the pandemic, and don't, at this point, require as much space. And we would like to do some renovations to the top floor of the Woodburn Community Complex with their stages and equipment, with a lot of their instruments and how they're generally set up. It makes it very difficult to do that while they are occupying that space. So, they are looking to move downstairs and just update their lease agreement to reflect the change in how the rental rate is all-inclusive and updated in line with the other tenants in the building, and then moves them to the main floor of the school building. It is set up essentially on an annual basis, but should we have additional shuffling needs, we have the ability to work with them to relocate them in the future.
Thank you. Motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then, what questions do we have for our assistant manager? Pretty clear. Good to call the roll?
Yep.
All right. Call the roll. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ikse Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're on to consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a deed release, deed of release from the Federal Aviation Administration in conveyance of a claimed deed to West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, for real estate along West Run Road. And if John Brabel would come to the podium, that'd be great.
Good evening, everybody. The, the property we own along West Run Road was purchased for navigational aids, which are still operating, being used every day. The Department of Highways is looking to do some improvements on West Run, and they need a small portion of our land. The portion of land they need, we're not using. It's, like I said, it's right along the roadway. We can't even access our land from the road using that piece that they're going to take, so it doesn't affect us in any, any way, shape, or form. It doesn't affect any future nav aids or any maintenance of the nav aids to date and in the future. So, we, we have been supportive of leasing the land. We worked with the FAA to, to make that happen. This land was purchased with a grant about 20 years ago, and the FAA looked at that to make sure that there were no issues with, with the release of the land. The only, the only issue we have with the release of land is any proceeds from that must go back into airport operations. So, either towards another grant, you know, we could use it towards local match, or just for operations in general. And I know with most other projects with our property, we've done the same thing. So, I don't see any issues with that.
Great. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. And then, does anyone have questions with that very nice and complete explanation?
My only question was, are you all okay with it? And you sound very sure, so...
Yep, absolutely.
It's good when we can figure out how to fit it all in.
Exactly.
We do not want to be holding up any kind of projects in that area.
Yeah, West Run needs, needs all the help it can get.
Yep.
Yes, it does.
So, anybody have any other questions? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ikse Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. The next item is consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance annuling a portion of First Street and providing for a dedicated additional private, public right-of-way to First Street. And for that one, I'm asking the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would have the effect of relocating First Street to line up with the relocated Campus Drive that is being done in connection with the UHS project to improve Beachhurst Avenue. City Council previously approved an ordinance similar to this one for Campus Drive, wherein it abandoned a portion of Campus Drive contingent upon WVU dedicating additional right-of-way for the new relocated roadway. In the area below Beachhurst Avenue and toward Hall Street, which is parallel the rail trail, the same property situation exists, where the city has a public right-of-way it would like to relocate, and the adjoining property owner on both sides is WVU. WVU has agreed to dedicate right-of-way in the area where the city would like First Street to be located, and that would line up with the new Campus Drive. And the effect of annuling the roadway in the existing location would be to return it to the adjoining owner, as it always is, and that, that owner here is WVU. So, this ordinance would accomplish that and allow the intersection to be aligned well. And our city engineer, Damian Davis, is here to address any questions about that project as well, if you would like.
Thank you. I noticed him and was going to see if he had anything else he wanted to add.
I think Ryan said it very well.
Thanks, David.
As you all know, DOH is...
As you all know, DOH's project's moving along now, finally began. They're doing the waterline replacement, but they're gonna move to Campus Drive here soon and that will be where our project is picking up at that. Right now, we're almost complete with design. Another two or so weeks, we'll be complete with design, and another two weeks after that, we'll probably be out the bid with that project. If anybody has any questions about the project itself, happy to entertain.
Why don't we have our motion? Move to approve? Thank you.
Second.
Perfect, and does anyone have any questions?
That's a city project?
It is a city project, yes.
So, and no DOH help on that at all?
The only, there was coordination with DOH, but DOH is not supporting it. I mean, they're supporting the project and the fact that they're, we worked with them in design to make sure that what their work did didn't impact what we wanted to do. So once they're done and what we're done, we'll coordinate together, we'll tie together.
Do we have any kind of understanding of what the cost of this is gonna be?
We're looking probably around a million dollars is the, I think they anticipated budget. Anywhere between five hundred to a thousand million, you know, it's, the way projects are coming in nowadays, I think we originally anticipated this being five to six hundred thousand dollar project, but with projects coming in now, it's looking like it might be a little more.
My perennial question in that area is, there's that intersection and then the roadway turns and there are some parking spaces that I think were gonna be possibly somehow time-limited that would help either if somebody wanted to use the trail or if somebody wanted to eat at one of the establishments there?
That is a further on part of the project at a later date, that's kind of looking at improving that Hall Street, the trail parking along there will be a follow-up project, yes.
I'd like to see if that follow-up project could be sooner rather than later, I know that I'm one voice. It's an area that has crazy nutty parking and.
It's been a fight down there to maintain that and making it nice would be.
I've seen, I've seen all the efforts to block people out of there or try to keep it reasonable. And then all the other parking there that's kind of crazy, and I noticed that there are some eating and drinking establishments near there and the trail is there, and it would be really nice if it had some time-limited parking so that people could.
And the state did, when they were doing the state, did a really nice trailhead there at Third Street.
Yes.
Yeah, so that would all tie together.
Yes, so I'm sure there won't be any extra money from this project because of how the bids come in, but whenever that could be done, that would be nice to kind of finish off that area now that it has access to a light and all.
And we are looking at, if, depending on, like you said, depending on how the bids are, we have a scope of work for the engineer, the consultant who's doing the design for that right now.
It's included in it?
It's not included in it right now, but if bids come in good, then we would have extra money to continue on with that design. But they've given us a scope of work to do that design work on that section.
Good.
So we are thinking about it.
Good.
Is there any hope that we can coordinate with the ongoing activities DOH and maybe get some piggyback on some of the contractors?
We're hoping, you know, we'll put out the bid and, you know, we're hoping we get good bids. We're hoping the DOH's contractor would bid on it, make coordination a lot easier if it was one contractor versus two. But, you know, with the, we are low-bid contracts, so we'd never know who's gonna, but it would be, it'd be nice, it would help with coordination. But we have coordinated with DOH and with locations and everything, so everything should, will tie together when we're complete.
No indication of interest, no indication of?
I know, I know the contractor is interested in the project, yes. I'm sure they'll bid on it.
The project is worthwhile in terms of what the safety issue involved, but the price tag is a little awakening.
Hopefully, we'll see some, we'll see some good bids coming in.
Steep like the roadway. Is there anybody else? Right?
No.
Thanks. Is there anything? If you would please call the roll?
Yes.
Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Iksia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item F, consideration of approval of White Park Tree Bid Award, 2023-04. And this would be our assistant manager, Emily Mazzaroli.
Thank you, so there wasn't an item included in your packet as we just received or concluded our bid opening last week on March 29th, and we needed to confirm the bid tabulations that they met all the requirements of the bid call and confirmed pricing. So we did receive three bidders on the design, GMS Land Design, B of Four Landscape Development, and Anderson Excavating. The original bid prices were on there, and then as I mentioned, as part of that process, we do verify all of that just because of how the bid tabulation forms exist. It's not an Excel spreadsheet that does the math for you, so we like to double-check that math. And so there were changes in each one of the bid prices, but it did not change the low bid or the order of any of those. So reviewing that with the design team, we are recommending award to the lowest bidder, GMS Land Design, in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. And again, this is part of the restoration conditions with MUB under their White Park Raw Waterline Agreement. So that is who will be covering the cost of this specific project. But through the amendment, the city was the entity that was identified to actually go through all the bidding process, contract process. So this has been sent to them as well.
And did you say whether, was even a MUB person who was on that?
MUB was reviewing the contract and kept in the loop, but they didn't have any additional comments beyond, we made some tweaks to the bid call before it went out, but beyond that.
Okay. Let's have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Anyone, discussion? A couple of questions.
We're to the discussion.
This includes planting?
Yes, this is three hundred and twenty-six trees and shrubs, the bulk of those are trees, some of them are shrubs. These were identified early on by the tree board, there was a section of trees that were identified by the tree board and a replanting plan that they had identified, but that did not cover obviously all three hundred and twenty-six trees. So we worked, I think, I believe it was with Dave Barnett of the tree board and our urban landscape director to identify the rest of the trees, and we have identified some of those areas that we are anticipating. We do have it so that those trees can be planted anywhere within the city, so it doesn't have to all go back into White Park. It's kind of like trying to fit twelve pounds potatoes in a six-pound sack, so there are, because they're two to one. So we are able to replant those anywhere within the city, and this contract is to have those over, I believe, the next four years.
The contract runs for four years?
Yes, so we, it doesn't, I guarantee, we're not gonna be planting three hundred and twenty-six trees, you know, this calendar year or anything. It'll be spread out over several years, and the contractor does have to provide a warranty on those trees that was in the bid call. So we do inspect them when they go in, make sure that they look like good quality trees that meet our definitions. I will not be the one doing that clearly, but somebody who knows much more about trees will be doing that, will accept the trees, and then they are responsible, I believe it's for twelve months after the trees are planted to ensure that they take root in other very specific planting terms that were provided to me by the tree board.
Does it cover the maintenance in terms of watering, making sure that they're?
So it's not watering, but it does give an appropriate season to plant in. We typically don't water trees, that's why you'll see a lot of our trees get planted. We don't normally plant a whole lot of trees during Earth, you know, on Earth Day in April, because then it gets very hot here in the summer. So most of our trees are actually planted over the winter, and that's when the standard planting season is. It does give the ability for the urban landscape director to plant trees elsewhere. Let's say a tree on High Street gives damage, they can use these trees in this contract to replace one of the trees in that and plant it in June, and they would, our own staff would be the ones to water those.
Was the, was MUB involved in this at all in terms of being made aware of what was going on and?
Yes, we've been working closely with MUB's staff on the development of the bid documents and with the tree board. We sent them the final version, they gave us a few tweaks, we incorporated those and then got the green light to go ahead and put that out to bid. And from there, they merely said, keep them informed with how the bids came in, and they got a copy of the initial estimates last week and then the same letter that you see today, they received today as well.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anyone else, yes?
You did say that the bid winner will be responsible for planting?
Yes, they kind of turnkeyed, so they do everything from going and picking it up where the trees are grown and delivering it, digging the hole, calling the one call to check for utilities. So we'll identify where they go, but it's their responsibility to confirm that there's no utilities or anything like that in those areas or if they have other concerns, planting it, mulching it, there is some incidental seeding, so if it's in an area that's grassy, that won't necessarily have, you know, they have to excavate more, they'll put the mulch back where, you know, around the tree, but then they may have to plant some grass seed around that.
I'm sorry to follow on, you said that we will identify where they go. Are we identifying the location for each of the trees that we want? Or are we just identifying where we want them and we're allowing them to place it? Or do we have somebody overseeing it?
We do have people overseeing that, so that is with our landscape director and tree board. So probably is going to depend on the location that we're putting those back. So if it's a bigger area, we may say, we want you to put these trees here, and it may not be so specific as to like placing flags and saying, put them here. So it probably depends, but if we're placing more secular trees or in tighter, you know, areas, then we'll probably be a little bit more specific about where those are going. I say we as the city, but it's the people who do the plants here.
Thank you.
So for instance, the tree board made a plan for the area between Mississippi Street and the reservoir, because that was the area that people go by the most often, and they were pretty much actually choosing, when they were making their plan, which is some years ago, they were picking particular locations because they were thinking about where trails might go, thinking about where the pipe is. So the one, one good reason why all those trees won't fit back where they were before is that you're probably not planting a big tree on top of a pipe. So they were taking all those different things into account and actually placing individual trees. So on the other side where there's more space, it could be completely different, I have no idea. I'm just an interested person who goes along and watches what they do sometimes.
Yes, we, so we do have that tree planting plan from the tree board that they made that have very specific trees in very specific locations. I think probably replanting the trees at White Park will obviously wait until the work that is happening in White Park is done or at least the locations of what is happening is finalized, just to make sure that you don't want to plant young trees in areas that could potentially have excavators or other pieces of equipment, even if it's not obviously in the direct path. Those roots are very fragile, so they can be damaged, so.
Did you have something?
Yeah, the tree board, we discussed on this meeting, the next meeting is specifically dedicated to this tree and shrub list as it relates to the proper location and everything you're talking about.
Great, so one suggestion to them is when they figure out which trees aren't needed in that area and especially if there's gonna be, it's so fun to try to work around this. When they're, when they're figuring out other places to put trees, you might put in some sort of higher priority other areas where MUB has worked before that need re-treating. So my favorite candidate is Creps Park where a pipe went through, and there's still some trees to be, dead trees that need to be taken down. And then it would be nice to plant some larger trees that would create shade in that area, not on the pipe. And even out at the reservoir where we are going to be adding some recreation amenities, it would be nice to plant some larger trees in that area, because I think they, that there have been some small whips that have been planted, but a few trees that were larger and distinctive would be nice out at the reservoir also. So just some suggestions, and then of course downtown trees and neighborhood trees. So there's lots, lots that could be done with those trees, so I look, I look forward to that.
I'll take this opportunity to remind everyone that all but one tree was recently removed from the Woodburn Community Complex, and we have requested a tree replanting plan, so that will be really great.
Well, maybe you're gonna have to go to one of Joe's meetings.
I think we're gonna have the tree board come to our meeting. We have tenants and stuff that have input.
All right.
Are they varying sizes, Emily, not all like one certain specific diameter?
Yes, I mean, they're on average about one inch, but some are, you know, three-quarters to an inch, some are an inch to an inch and a half. So, and then some of the shrubs have other specifications that were provided, something about the number of like branches that come off of that, and you can see why I have fake plans in my office.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah.
They were done professionally.
Yes, somebody, somebody that knows things about trees had all, I had to look up a lot of things. B and B means bald and burlapped apparently, so I learned a lot in just helping put this together. So yes, I mean, the, some of, they probably range from five feet to about eight to ten.
Yeah, different than whips. Like whips are just, they're just like little sprouts of trees versus like a tree that's a little bit larger. I know, just enough to be dangerous. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on the subject? I very much appreciate all the effort that went into it and MUB's willingness to work on this, and so it will be nice to work through this. Anybody else have comment to make? All right, there was also a tree taken down in the front at Wild Hill.
I know, I heard about the tree.
Uh huh.
So we will all be fighting for tree resources apparently.
Well, but I mean, this is a large number of trees and we have four years, so I think we can do it. All right, if you would please call the roll.
Yes. Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Iksia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. And actually, Brian, there's probably room on that nice playground somewhere in there for a nice big tree.
Now there is.
City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. We're all celebrating that we've arrived, that.
Thank you, Mayor. We're all celebrating that we've arrived, that spring has arrived, right?
Yes.
And it's nice to have some sunshine and greenery and leaves are sprouting. As such, the city is, we're encouraging the entire community, our neighborhoods, our individual residents. This is a good time to participate in cleanup activities and, and beautification efforts. And it's, it's a good time to see our efforts come to fruition. As such, the city of Morgantown is hosting a Love Where You Live and Work Cleanup Campaign event in partnership with the Main Street Morgantown and the Mon River Revitalization Task Force. This will be held on April 13th this year. The cleanup will occur between 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM at two different locations. All city employees will be hard to meet along with Main Street participants. We'll meet at 4:30 Sproose and there will focus in the downtown. This is, this is an ongoing effort also to, to try to clean up our downtown and make our downtown more, and our trails more useful, user friendly and, and attractive to, to not only our, our residents and families, but visitors coming in from the outside. We'd encourage participation in that as much as possible, even by council. We welcome you out there and the city will provide the equipment and the tools and the bags and whatever else we need. I think you'll, you'll, I think you've seen some of the efforts the city's made in conjunction with Main Street Morgantown to try to, try to clean up and improve our downtown area and make it safer. And we continue to do that. And in fact, we have our next city's safety, downtown safety committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. And we continue, we just continue to, to, to keep the emphasis on that. The other thing that I would bring city council attention to, I, I sent out this afternoon another copy of a, of a, of the location where you can participate on a, an online survey. Our communication department is really focusing on a rebranding. In some ways, I call it branding, but a rebranding effort to try to bring some consensus from the community in terms of a representation of who the city is and what we want it to be represented as. So if you, we would encourage you to not only yourselves participate in that survey, but encourage people in your neighborhoods and your acquaintances to, to go online and take, take advantage of that survey. I think it's, it's going to be a real worthwhile event. I would like to also, in relation to downtown, would really like to express appreciation of Main Street Morgantown. They, I think they, they have really picked up the effort to, to try to beautify our downtown and encourage businesses, businesses and property owners to beautify. And I really appreciate Amy and Russ's and everybody else's efforts there at, at the Main Street Morgantown. Finally, also in relation to downtown, there's continued effort being made to implement, to, to make High Street a, a location where, that we can shut off and make kind of an area to celebrate and to, to enjoy gathering and congregating. And, and so there are efforts to try, the implementation of the, the outdoor recreation amendment, which would allow for different kinds of activities in the downtown area. We, we also are encouraging individuals and organizations to consider planning events that would allow us to utilize our new power to close off High Street and make it be able to focus on just specific things. And I'm curious to see how well that goes. And there are some meetings being held in that regard. Other than that, I, I'm looking forward to prosperous spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Lot going on. Report from the city clerk, also an area where there's a lot going on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So a little bit about our upcoming election, which is April 25th. We also have a lot going on. On March 29th, we had our poll worker training and the beginning of our poll worker training was a presentation by Angela Cartwright, the Director of Diversity Initiatives and Community Engagement. And she did a fabulous job, fabulous job. Everyone at the poll worker training said they want to have her come back. And she said, we'd love to come back. It's the second year that WVU has hosted our diversity training for our poll workers and we agreed, we're going to do it again. So thanks to WVU for allowing Angela to come and present to us. Tomorrow, we have our public test and I know many of you are coming because by state code, we have to have a quorum of council. And so I appreciate that. I let everyone know that we will be doing Facebook Live and will be recorded and played on Channel 14. It's 14 now, isn't it? Didn't they change? Yes.
I should know, I guess.
Yes.
Because it's 14 now.
Yes. Today, let me go back a bit. We had our drive-through voters registration event and we did have some folks come by and had a good conversation and were able to update some voters' registrations. So glad to do that again. Always there for folks who might need some questions answered. So April 11th is the last day to file as a write-in. And I want to share real quick, who can vote. Obviously, we will never turn anyone away at our, at our polls, but I know that there's a common question among folks. Because we are, only have the odd numbered wards up for election, some of our voters were worried that because they don't live in 1, 3, 5, or 7, that they couldn't vote. So everyone in the city who is registered vote, can vote at the election. So I just want to make sure that I share that with everyone.
And we need them all.
Yes.
Everyone to vote.
We do need them all. April 12th through the 22nd is early voting and that will be at the Historic Depot. And that does exclude Sunday. Monday through Friday is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM and Saturday is 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Another common question is, is there free parking? And yes, there is free parking down at the depot. We will have signs and flyers, that whole 10 days of voting. So we welcome folks to come in on early voting. As Councilor Harshberger said last meeting, there are some events going on down at the trail. So we're hoping for that, more people. And then again, April 25th is Election Day and that is from 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. We will have election headquarters this year because city hall is closed. Where we typically do that will be at the Public Safety Building in the training room. So we'll be bringing all, all the poll workers will come back and bring their equipment there and that's where all the, the votes will be counted. I want to share about signage and getting the word out. The last two elections in 19 and 21, I hear from, I heard from folks that said, what if I don't get a paper, newspaper? And what if I don't listen to the radio? And what if I don't watch the news? How do I know about elections? So we accomplished this, this year and we're hoping to have more folks come out. We did work with MUB and we put election flyers in the MUB invoices that go to every city resident who has a service with MUB. And so we're hoping to get more folks out.
Two times.
Two times. That's right. 10,000 the first time, 10,000 the second time. We still need poll workers. We have enough to fill each spot, but we typically do need alternates. So please continue to spread the word. They do continue to trickle in the applications and we appreciate it. Even though poll worker training is over, we still can train them. It's not too late. Real quick, the polling places, I want to share again, since our last election in 21, the polling places have changed. The precincts have changed. And that's how our polling places are determined and that is by which precinct you live in. So if you're, if folks are not sure which precinct they live in, they can certainly call the clerk's office and we can look their address up and let them know. We glad to do that. But I know that our county clerk more than likely sent letters to them before the last election in November to let folks know that their precinct had changed. So Precinct 1 is at the Mount near mall. Precinct 2A and 2B are at Morgantown High Auditorium Lobby. Precinct 10 is the First Presbyterian Church. Precinct 13 is at Morgantown Municipal Airport. 16 is at Bow Park Senior Center. 23 is Research Ridge Business Park. 26 is Suncrest United Methodist Church. 30 is Saberton Hill Baptist Church and 31 is Morgantown Municipal Airport. The candidates, Ward 1, Joe Bugonam and James Giuliani. Third Ward, Louise Wheezy Michael. Fifth Ward, Danielle Trumbull and Marley Unegas. Ward 7, Brian Butcher and Ben Mail. I wanted to share that there's a flyer that I brought and there are some extras underneath the clock for folks. If you want to take a few and share them, this is provided by the Secretary of State's office and it just says, be registered and ready to vote. And it tells you what the acceptable forms of nonphoto ID and acceptable forms of photo ID for Election Day and early voting. So it's a handy little flyer for folks if you would like to take some. You can also find this information on the Secretary of State's website under elections. The sample ballot will appear in the Dominion Post tomorrow. And then lastly, I want to say, oh, one other thing, signage. That's another thing that folks have been talking about is how we're notifying folks out on the streets. We have worked diligently with Director Davis, fabulous job, him and his staff making yard signs and our banners. A banner went up today across High Street. So take a look when you go by. We've worked with the airport and the Met Theater and parking garage on their marquee. They will have early voting and Election Day on that's already happening. The Neighborhood Coordinating Council will be giving them some yard signs to put out in each of the, in their communities. And then lastly, I just want to say, so much goes on in the election and I certainly couldn't have done it myself. Number one, my deputy clerk, Heather Carl, fabulous job she did in assisting. But almost every director in the city has played such a huge role in making this election a success. And so I just want to share a few things. Airport director, when I was looking for a polling place, I said, hey, John, can I come talk to you about the election? And he said, come on over. So I went up and he, we took a little walk and now that's one of our polling places. So we couldn't have done it without him. The cultural arts director, Vincent Kitch, he did the same thing. I asked one time and said, can we do early voting down at the Historic Depot? And he said, absolutely. The communications director and his staff, it's a constant thing, working with them with putting notices out to the public and our signs and our banners and videos, all of that. Our IT department with technology, GIS analysts with the things that are going to be happening for Election Day and early voting with the GIS stuff that we're doing and the survey that we're hoping folks will take part in. Parking Authority Director with the marquee and parking. Bow Park Director for the polling place, she provides a polling place at the Bow Park Center. Our finance director with all of our funding and all of those types of things that have to do with money. The municipal court clerk and fire department over in the Public Safety Building and the police department for their spaces they allow us to use for all of our events since the city hall was closed. And our Director of Development Services, he's helped tremendously in recruiting our, some of our staff to work on Election Day. So there are other people and I hope I haven't forgotten anyone, but I just wanted to share that. It takes an army to do it and I'm grateful. That's it.
Thank you. Our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. With councils moving forward of the First Street Enrollment Ordinance tonight, we'll have that on second reading at your next regular meeting and scheduled for adoption. After the ordinance is adopted, we will accept the easement executed by WVU and then record both the ordinance and the easement document, which will put the street in the place where the roadway improvements are being designed, hopefully in line with the construction timeline that Damian advised of this evening. Kim mentioned a bit about this, but the city staff and stakeholders and council members who've been working on High Street issues and what was originally the designated outdoor refreshment areas and is now the private outdoor designated areas, will be meeting next week to talk about implementing that in Morgantown. I've just provided that snippet of the larger alcohol legislation that passed to some of that group and we'll try to work through an outline of the, the details that we'll need to address both on the city side and on the participating private club side under that ordinance to help give that working group a, a little bit of a guideline to work from at that meeting. Finally, the Fire Marshal has been looking into a vendor that works with other local governments to provide a, essentially a clearing house for reports of testing of fire alarm systems and sprinkler systems and other safety features that would allow for automated reporting to the Fire Marshal's office when the testing is out of date on those systems. So they can more efficiently track when required testing is being performed and go to inspect when it needs to be done. He's passed on some reference materials and a sample ordinance and I'll be working with him to see how and if the city can implement those as well. That's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you very much. Who wants to start? Would you like to start?
So in our neighborhood, as the mayor's aware, we've been for, I guess, two years almost now, talking about getting the kind of rain garden thing in the back of Turtle Park cleaned up. And I, you know, Matt Cross principally, along with some other neighbors and my wife have gone through there and it is cleared out now. And it is nice little flat and it's ready for the, basically the replanting and for the kids to put in their, the neighborhood kids to put in their little fairy houses and stuff like that. So, you know, this spring, this summer, you know, I honestly had expected it to take a lot longer for them to clear out what's there, but it's pretty much done now. You can go by there and see that it's pretty much cleared out. I think there's like two bushes back there and that's it. So yeah, Matt works hard, along with the, the other great neighbors that are helping that happen. So it looks like, you know, it's, it's looking good to be completed this year. And that's a great, just little example of a true community neighborhood project. And I'm glad that we could, we could get that done. I'm working to meet with member, well, next Thursday, I'll be meeting with some, some leadership from Project Mushroom. And then also, I was supposed to meet this Thursday with the ACT program from Behavioral Medicine. They kind of do direct behavioral medicine services in, inside of people's homes as well as their community outreach department. A lot of people apparently are having respiratory conditions right now. So a lot of meetings keep getting canceled. There's something going around. And I guess it's not COVID. But, so, but, but those talks and meetings and stuff like that are looking to be happening. We're looking more about like how the city can coordinate with some of those programs and figure out what we can do to help behavioral medicine in those respects. And then, oh, yeah, this Thursday, so I believe it's this, yeah, this Saturday, we have, I didn't know this until recently, but we have a video game development studio that's like a a, kind of like a nonprofit that came out of WVU professors that teach game design. It's called Mon River Games and they're having a little event this Saturday. But I also wanted to just like kind of take a look at their space and kind of learn what they're doing. They do, they are like a nonprofit collective and I guess a lot of what they do is try to work on projects throughout the year to then teach students and just interested community members about game design. And that's a really cool little project that it'd be nice for us to at least bolster our voice to within the community. But, yeah, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a couple of Mon Rail Trail Conservancy updates and the MRTC was just recently awarded last week a couple recreational trail grants. And one is for $260,000 to address drainage issues below the arboretum that have been causing minor landslides onto the rail trail. And then also a $220,000 grant to repave a mile and a half section in Star City. Both of those grants require a 20% match, so there'll be a $44,000 and a $52,000 local match that MRTC will need to come up with to complete the funding on those two projects. But very excited that those were recently announced. And just an update, the Collins Ferry Connector, work had to stop on that trailhead connecting that part of Suncrest down to the trail, just due to the wet conditions of the trail. And that's going to restart here in the next week. And so hopefully we'll have that work moving forward and completed this, this summer. And then lastly, down by the amphitheater, there's the Foundry Street Link. And Damian met with our Executive Director Ella Belling and someone from Arasher Energy looking at wayfinding signs and lighting. And we hope to have a plan soon to put out bid for lighting for that section of entry onto the trail in the amphitheater. And so those are four positive projects in the works for the rail trail. That's all.
Wonderful. I'm up. Missed our last meeting because my first meeting that I've ever missed, but I was on city business in Washington DC with the National League of Cities and the West Virginia Municipal League. We met with all four of our federal representatives. We met with the Appalachian Regional Commission, the Department of Transportation, the National Endowment for the Arts, ONRC, the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. Got a lot of follow-up to do now that we're back, but I think we had a lot of good conversations. The city manager mentioned the city's rebranding survey. There is also a Bow Park survey out right now that is on the design and components of Lower Marilla Park. So you can find both of those on the city's social media on each organization's respective website. So check that out, give your input, now's your time. There is a council candidate forum on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Hotel Morgan. I hope some folks will come out to that and ask some questions, get to know us a little more. Not that I'm quiet and no one knows me, but, you know. There, oh, I was going to mention the city cleanup, but the city manager already did that as well, Thursday, April 13th, 1:00, down at the Heritage Park by the dam. And our first Main Street Morgantown Arts Walk is on Saturday, April 15th, from 11:00 to 4:00. You could come down, visit the Arts Walk, wander down to the amphitheater and do your early voting and get it all done at once. Wonderful.
Have a couple of announcements. One, I want to, I want to congratulate the MHS Mars team. They came, Mars works with robots. They have a much more sophisticated name that is escaping me at this moment, but they came and did a presentation for us about their club. But their members just came back from Tennessee and they won the Impact Award, which is pretty prestigious in this work that they've been doing. And they are the third Hall of Fame team in history to win this award at regionals. So the kids will be okay. Congratulations, y'all. Last week I was honored, last Tuesday, I was honored to join WVU and Sister Cities Commission to a lunch that we hosted for female Ukrainian veterans. It was really emotionally impactful, but also really great to hear about some of their experiences and some of the things that they're doing in these difficult times. And I got a chance to talk to some of them and ask how their time in Morgantown was. And a lot of them mentioned the fact that they were really surprised, but happy to see all of the signs that we have in our city that say they stand with Ukraine and the flags. And they wanted me to tell folks that they see it and they feel it and they really appreciate it. It's crazy, they said it was crazy to think that, they knew that this was a really big impact, but it was crazy to see how far it reached and how even in our community, folks were, you know, uplifting their voices. They gave us some presents that I will present really quick. But we got this really cool book with pictures about Ukraine and it teaches you about all the different regions of Ukraine. And they gave us these postcards to, oh, and they wrote here, "To Morgantown with gratitude from Open World Ukrainian delegation. Thank you for standing with Ukraine and supporting our fight for freedom and global security. Ukraine's Women's Veterans, March 23rd, 2023." And they gave us these postcards as well that have been sharing some stories that people have heard in the media. This one is in reference to a Ukrainian soldier during the first attacks when they were coming in. Russia told them to put their arms down and they said, they said the F-word, no. And so that was, that's presented here. And one thing that we were talking about there when they were sharing this story, this is a tractor pulling, oh my gosh, what is this thing? A tank, there you go. You can see, y'all, I'm not very involved in military work like this. But this is the story that was going around, around Ukraine about farmers kind of taking control and stealing tanks from Russian military people. But it was, we were talking about it and we were like, this is very West Virginia, you know, kind of taking control of this stuff and not waiting and not getting beat down. So I thought it was very nice and I was happy that they shared that with us. But I think that this deserves to be somewhere nicer than my two-bedroom apartment, so I want to give this to, I'll give this to you. We can give it to you in a little bit. But, yeah, that concludes the end of my report. I appreciate y'all allowing me to be there with them and they thank you for your advocacy as well. That concludes my report. Thank you for your service.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. I had the pleasure of meeting with them too, I think, and the mayor in the past.
Before they ran this big of a war.
Yeah, they are a very notable group, but enjoyable to see. I have a couple of things. One, a positive side, the South Park Association of Neighbors met on the 29th and they're off to a new season. They have new leadership and you can look forward to seeing communication from them and activities that will be ongoing. It's, it's very encouraging to see the continuation of one of the oldest neighborhood associations in all of Morgantown. And it's continuing. I was wondering if the city might do something that the state should have done, which is fill those holes along Spruce Street that are causing traffic to swerve from one lane to the next in order to avoid them? Even if we have to come in with shovels and what have you and just throw in something that will mitigate till we can do a better solution? That's kind of a request. And I will ask that again, I think.
And a good, a good request.
The other thing I, is I, two other things. One is I want to thank our city clerk or our city clerk's department. I noticed in our packet that there are links that make it much easier to navigate. The idea of going from the actual agenda to the appropriate document within the documents, which are extreme, people, as they come to us, they're, they're in a neighborhood of 100 pages or better. And to have those links just make it a lot easier to keep your thought as you're trying to read your way through. So I do appreciate that, call that out. And I know that's an extra effort, but I wanted to encourage it and thank you for it. And then lastly, on a conference call with the Municipal League, they were talking about the annual conference coming up, which seems to be some distance away. It's July 31st to August 2nd. That's up in Wheeling at Ogilvy and the warning was that Ogilvy's facilities fill up very quickly. So I'll give you a warning that if you're interested in going and you would like to stay at the Ogilvy site as opposed to offsite someplace, that look at your calendars and mark it as something that you might want to look at and let our city clerk know so that we can get in there and get the appropriate number of rooms and make our impact with the people that can attend. And that's it. Thank you.
My turn?
Yes.
In addition to congrats on the Mars team, congrats to Morgantown High on being declared the 2023 West Virginia Academic Showdown Grand Champions. Took a lot to say. In addition to that, Mon County Summer Avalanche Sign Up Program is now open. There are a lot of great activities for the young residents to sign up and participate in the summer, whether it's elementary school, middle school, or high school, all of which is free of charge with transportation, breakfast, and lunch being provided. We scheduled our annual, this is the third time, so that makes it annual, right? Our annual neighborhood yard sale for Saturday, June 24th. So if you're in the First Ward neighborhood and want to declutter your home, when the signup sheet makes its way to Facebook, be sure to sign up. I would also like to take a moment to thank the Tree Board for coming to our Neighborhood Association meeting to discuss the health and safety of our trees in our ward. As I'm sure everyone's aware, the residents of Morgantown are very passionate about their trees.
No.
And that's why I find it so important to look to the experts and allow them the opportunity to showcase their areas of expertise that they have declared their lives to and for that I am appreciative. And finally, with the Tree Board, April 22nd is MRTC Handmade Day, but more importantly, it is Earth Day and they will have their own event table set up for everybody to stop by. And that's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. So have lots of little comments. One is for the clerk amongst all your other duties. When we're figuring out that there are these events up and down the trail and we're trying to get people to come from wherever the events are to the depot, it would be great if we had some kind of, any kind of signage so that that was mobile, that we could, so the handmade market is generally, you know, further down the trail toward the hotel. And I'm not sure, trying to think of what the other event was, but all those events have certain areas. So if we could get something, two or three signs, just little push-in signs or an A-frame or something that, or little A-frame, something so that that were mobile, then when we have those different events on the trail, we could move them to the right spot to give the come hither to vote. Just one of those many ideas that other people have and that we don't end up doing the actual work like you do, but that, I think that would be very helpful. Let's see, I wanted to shout out in appreciation to Xie Vega and her willingness to chair the last meeting, which was very much appreciated to jump in there and do that. And also appreciated Danielle Trumbull's, Danielle Trumbull's willingness to miss a meeting, which was not easy for her to do, but sometimes it just has to be done. I remember being frustrated the first time that I did that and I did not like it. And as has already been said, we attended meetings in Washington DC. It's been really interesting to meet the different personalities who represent us and see the range of approaches that they each have and, and get to, get to speak with them and try to sort of meet them on the level of what they're, what they're interested in and how they can help us. And I really appreciated the work of our airport director, of the organization of MAP for, and Drew Bailey in our Communications Department and our grant writer and Robin and all the work that everyone did to prepare us to go to Washington DC by giving us some information letters that we could hand out that had people's names and information on so that we could refer them directly to whatever the group was that was appropriate. And they each came in handy at different moments. So when we were, we happened to be in Alex Mooney's office, he had just been to visit MAP, so we could hand him the MAP letter, which was the appropriate thing to give him because he was excited because he had just been here. And when we talked to FAA, we could hand out the airport letter and then put that MAP letter with it. So we just really, they didn't stand a chance. We were all on it. So I really appreciate everyone's work and how much effort, how much effort was put into getting ready to go and support from the clerk's office and the city manager who took a meeting with WVU, he was thinking of coming with us and then that did not work because we needed to attend to a WVU meeting. So we just, everyone helped, helped cover, cover all of the, all of the areas. I wanted to make one mention about signage on the trail and I, this is sort of a little educational piece. So Ella Belling with MRTC received from the Great Allegheny Passage, and I don't know if everybody knows what the Great Allegheny Passage even is, but it starts in Pittsburgh and it's, it's a big trail that goes east. It's very, very long. I can't remember if it goes all the way to DC, but short of DC, it's, it's a long, beautiful trail. And the people who put together the Great Allegheny Pass, Passage have a sign package that they developed that was very expensive. And they very nicely gave to Ella Belling of MRTC this package and they, she said, well, you know, this would be great to make use of. And the only requirement was that we select different colors, which were selected. Pardon? So along our trail now are our colors of this really nice sign package. And so I just wanted to make sure that as people were doing their planning and branding and so on, that they appreciated that this was something bigger than Morgantown, something that needed to be respected, something that if you go up to Connelsville, there'll be those signs, if you go to Pittsburgh, there'll be those signs, that all over our area and all of these trails are going to be connected. So we are going to be very ready when the connections to Pittsburgh happen, when the connections happen over to Ohio and so on, that we have similar sign configuration that people know and respect. So I just wanted to just mention that, that sometimes when we have our own sign designs, which we've had many in Morgantown that got to the prototype and didn't quite get much further, and I'm sure that now we're going to continue following through because I can see it in people's eyes at Main Street and I can see it in our branding exercises. But just that sometimes we need to figure out how to blend in with other sign packages and, and plans that have already been in place for a long time and signs that have and, and plans that have already been in place for a long time and signs that have already been invested in. And also I appreciate the continued work on the lighting underneath the bridge. So this is the bridge, if you're at the Ruby, the Ruby Amphitheater Park, and you go underneath, that road has got so many names. South High Street, I guess, there would be one way to describe it, but the very first bridge past that bridge has been worked on the lighting. Pardon?
It's more Don Knotts.
Don Knotts. Well, I think it's also called South University in there somewhere.
Foundry Street.
Ah, Foundry Street is the name of the road underneath.
Exactly right.
See, there's a lot of, lot, lot of names going around here. So anyway, that, that project has been, has that been like six or seven years or something?
2012.
2012.
Yeah, seven's a good year with DOH money.
Maybe 10 years then?
Yeah.
Anyway, I've been on that committee before quite a few times and gone with engineers and looked at it, and it's like some lights and some conduit and a sign. So anything that anyone can do to help move that thing along, so if Damian Davis has been out there or, or anyone from MRTC, and I wanted to be there because I knew quite a bit of the history of that project, but anything that we can do to finish off some of these things that have been around for so long and kind of respect some of the ideas, that would be super helpful so that we can keep things moving along, because there's nothing like getting a big grant and not being able to use it. And I think it's good for DOH to see us complete things and that the money doesn't just all go away somewhere else. I probably have other things, but, oh, I know, one other thing. On Saturday, with a great deal of resilience and grit, Pathfinder celebrated its 50th anniversary out at the Mason Dixon Park. And I know this because I looked at the weather and I went out for a hike with my family in the morning when it was pretty and sunny and there wasn't much wind. And their, their event, they had two bicycle rides, two, two different types of bicycling in the morning, so they, some of the people got in what they wanted to do. They had their eating at 1, but at 2, they were going to take this nice trail that's out there. Trying to remember if it's the Pixie Cup Trail, but it's the ferry, it's the ferry trail that's out there. So if you go to Mason Dixon Park and you go all the way in to right by the creek and you walk through the baseball field, there is the most glorious hike you can ever go on, and I really love the arboretum, but this is more gorgeous. Because the first part of the hike, you go along the river, the second part of the hike, you go up and through these little fairy houses that different artists have made all through the woods, and right before you get to even the fairy houses, there's the Mason Dixon Line, so you're, you can stand part in West Virginia and part in Pennsylvania, so that's kind of fun. And then you come back after you go through all these little fairy houses, they're like built into the bottoms of trees, and you don't have to have a kid, I had an eight-year-old with me, but you don't have to have a kid with you to go, it's, there were adults out there. And you just go around and go back down by the creek and then just walk straight back. So it's, it's a very linear thing because you can always see the creek, or you can almost always see the creek or where the creek would be. Can't get lost, but it is the most glorious hike. So anyway, we got to do this hike, I got to say hello to the festivities and go home when it started raining, and when, it just was incredible wind, amazing wind. So anyway, that's enough from me. Thank you all. So now we need somebody to read us into executive session.
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A-429 to discuss acquisition and or development of real estate in the Fifth Ward. In pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A-429 to discuss acquisition and or development of real estate in the Sixth Ward.
Thank you very much. Is there? Second. Thank you. On favor.
Aye.
All right, here we go. Do this.